Thank you and good evening, everyone. I call to order the Crestwood Board of Education Study Session at 5:31. Ms. Janun, if we could take a roll?
Mrs. Berry?
Here.
Mr. Baydoun?
Here.
Salzeyat is absent. Ms. Fawaz?
Is the president not here?
Here.
Absent.
I'm sorry, is the president not here today? Is there a reason why? Because I haven't received an email.
She's not here today.
Is she really out of the country and she didn't tell us?
She did tell me.
Oh, but she didn't tell us. It would have been nice for us to get an email as a board because that's the proper thing to do.
In our last meeting, she did address the board and say she was going to be out.
It wasn't in any notes. I didn't see any until somebody called me and told me that, which I think is very inappropriate.
Wasn't that similar to Mr. Garcia last year when we would ask and you wouldn't have a clue and nobody sent us emails?
No, it's different because this was the first meeting for them.
I think we should be able to...
Okay, let us carry on. It's no problem.
Ms. Salam, here, Ms. Kaminsky.
Here.
Mr. Sabo.
Here.
Okay, topics of this session.
Thank you, Vice President Baydoun. So, we have three items for the study session. Two items were requested by board members, which we'll go over. Resignation/retirement update procedure. Second item, transportation update. Third item is one of our updates for a construction update. And then, so what I'd like to do is, what I'd like to do for the study session items is, when possible, when I have the questions in advance, it allows me to put some paperwork together so that it's easy to follow for the board as well. I may have one extra in there. And also, this information can then be put into the notes for the minutes for the study session so that it makes it clear the discussion and what the items were. So, why am I turned around here? My apologies. So, through the conversations, and I apologize. Linda, can I see that? My apologies. Thank you. So, on June 30th, Trustee Kaminsky and Trustee Berry were questioned if Mr. Lee Van Valkenburg...
I'm sorry, can you remind me? Did I question it?
No. Trustee Kaminsky sent the email. You were on the email. There were email exchanges.
Oh, okay. All right, I thought I questioned it.
Yeah, there were email exchanges and I believe both of you had questions, so I just wanted...
No, no, I didn't ask any questions. I was just surprised. I know that Kaminsky asked and I said, "Wow," I think, or something like that, but I don't recall asking any questions unless you... I can go back through my emails.
I mean, the point of the purpose of this conversation is Trustee Kaminsky asked that we have this conversation in the study session.
Oh, okay.
And I'm reflecting upon the emails that sparked this conversation.
Okay.
So, on June 30th, it was asked, you know, if Mr. Lee Van Valkenburg retired, and my response was, he did retire. And in my Friday update for, in January, I had it listed in the Friday update that he was retiring by the end of the school year. Dr. Lazar pulled that out of the Friday update, and we've corrected that since then so that what's happening now in the Friday updates is that they're live links now with Kristen so that there's not miscommunication if something gets pulled or something doesn't get pulled. And Dr. Lazar pulled it because Mr. Van Valkenburg requested that his retirement be kept confidential until after school ended.
On the board?
He asked for it to be confidential because he was still working. Therefore, we pulled it and we were going to bring it to the board today as it's in the board report. And then later, it was asked about Christina Albojama who resigned. She took on an assistant principal role at Livonia. We wish her the best. Also, we wish Mr. Lee Van Valkenburg the best. He's taking on a new role in his, I believe, in South Carolina. And the question was, you know, the board hasn't been updated on Mrs. Albojama's resignation. And the response to that was, Mrs. Albojama did not submit a letter of resignation. And until we get an official letter of resignation, we don't update the board because things can change. As time went on, we still didn't receive a letter of resignation and, oh, here it is. We still didn't receive a letter of resignation. And then, Dr. Lazar followed up with the Human Resources Department of Livonia to confirm her hire. They confirmed. That's when we let the board know. So, a couple of things I'd just like to update the board real quick because Trustee Kaminsky asked that we talk about this in the study session to see if there's any ways or anything we want to do differently. First, we've continued to be transparent with the board because we have that live link in the Friday updates that has personnel. It has resignation, it has termination, it has retirement. It also has the exit survey information as requested by the board, so that's still in the Friday updates. The second thing that we are currently doing is that when retirements or resignations are not official, we wait until we receive official letters before we update the board or put them in the board reports. And then, again, sharing of the exit interviews. That's our current process. So, Trustee Kaminsky asked if we can have this conversation, and I appreciate that, in terms of, is there something that the board would like different between or beyond the live link, the Friday updates, and then the board meetings? Is there anything that the board would like to see different in terms of keeping that afloat?
Well, if I may. My understanding was that if it's a personnel matter and, you know, they request confidentiality that we discuss it in a closed session. I just think that if the board's in the know, it doesn't make for uncomfortable circumstances. And certainly, if someone would have come to me personally and said, "Hey, did you hear that Mr. Van Valkenburg's retiring?" Had it been in closed session, I would say, you know, I can't discuss employees under subject. I just feel better if the board's in the know. I don't know if that changed or if it was a communication thing. I know previously, which we don't like to discuss, we used to be informed of those things. I thought we still were, but I don't know that this has come up in this kind of a manner. And then, because, Linda, you had pulled this, when I talked to Dr. Masalim, he had said, "Oh, yeah, it's in the January update, Sue." And I'm like, "Yeah, I'm looking at my January update. No, it's not." So, then it caused concern that there was two different updates. And I think Dr. Masalim researched that, corrected that item, so there's only one living document. So, I appreciate that.
Of course.
I just, you know, and I don't know how the rest of my colleagues feel about that. I just feel better being in the know about those things.
I second that for the simple reason that I have family whose kids go to that school. And they actually reached out to me and said, "Hey, how is this person?" I said, "You know what? I wasn't even aware. I don't know if you guys were aware, but if we know something, then we can at least know how to respond to the public when stuff like that happens." So, it kind of made it difficult. I was thrown off. I have quite a few cousins that are... And they were excited to have her and a friend of a friend who works for that district. They were very excited to have her, but I had no clue that she was gone. So, I didn't even know how to answer. I said, "You know what? You see Dr. Masalim more than I do. Why don't you ask him?" So...
Mr. Chair?
Yes?
Just my two cents, too. If you're giving... If I'm hearing it right, you're going to let us know when it actually takes place and you actually receive documentation of the person leaving. Anything before that, and I don't know if everyone feels that way, but anything before that, I don't really think you should be telling us either because whether somebody calls me or not, I don't want to say, "I heard," you know, or "maybe," or "this is what's being discussed" because that's really nobody's business either. So, unless I know 100%, and that would be you knowing 100%, you telling me that, I don't think we need to have that information because it just causes more confusion. Everybody's going to be calling us, talking to us about it, or saying something, and we don't have true facts or evidence to support what they're saying. So, why would we even care to be in the discussion or talk if they're not... if it's not actually resigned, or not actually terminated, or not actually hired? You know what I'm saying? Like, I would rather have the evidence.
So, I think we're talking about two different animals, though.
Just...
Sorry.
It's okay. So, are you...
Yeah, that's just my take is if you don't know 100%, then I don't think it should be shared with us.
So, just going off of that, there's a lot of hearsay in our community about various and tons of information. I think legally, we need to also protect our employees to where, until they send the actual... Maybe you should circle back with legal because I believe until they send an official resignation letter, I don't believe we're privy to release that information to the board or to anyone else. If they have discussions with you, now, I know verbal discussions sometimes are legally binding as well, but that's where we need to request a resignation letter, right? So, just ensure that we're doing that legally to protect the district as well and the employees, right?
I just have a comment.
So, one second. One second, man. Trustee Berry, I think Ms. Kaminsky was first.
I just initially, I think, Nasha was first. I don't know if they...
I see you before her. Go ahead.
Okay. We're talking two separate animals. So, Christine's was different. Obviously, she had not officially resigned. I got a phone call that Monday night because I know somebody that works in Livonia schools and they're like, "Hey, how is this person?" But that's totally different, and I concur 100%. Mr. Van Valkenburg, on the other hand, resigned officially, correct, in January. And although he wanted, you know, that to be private, I just feel like we should have been entrusted with that information in a closed session.
Yeah, yeah. Dr. Lazar can speak to that.
If I can speak to that, the day the email came through...
On Christine or on...
On Lee.
Okay.
On Mr. Van Valkenburg. Trustee Berry was still present at the time Dr. Masalim was out, so I had called and I followed up with Trustee Berry as well. What happens with some of those retirements is they have the opportunity to put in retirement early in order to get a stipend. Some people will call and say, "I really don't want anybody to know. Please don't share it." Some people don't care either way. For sake of not letting the wrong name through, I was holding them all because their official retirement date is not until the end of the school year. So, they would all come out together at the end of the school year because, again, you know, then you're tracking who does, who doesn't, whatever. The agreement that we had come to over the phone in our conversation was, once I filed all of the January ones, to send a confidential memo just to the board with, these are the people who have submitted their end... Because even though they're coming in in January, they're not effective until June. And I believe I had asked, what would the preference be?
That was the last... We weren't even... I hadn't seen anybody.
Yeah, yeah.
I hadn't...
Correct. So, and I think, you know, if the board agrees, that the preference would be to send a confidential memo to the board strictly in January of, these are the retirements I've received for end of year January, but not to put them on a personnel report or on a board report for anybody else to see. That way, if something does come up, you would be better aware. So, that process...
Totally concur.
Yeah.
Totally concur.
But only if they send the resignation letter?
It's retired... The ones that come into it.
Or retirement date, right?
Yeah.
Official retirement.
Yeah.
Good. Trustee Janun.
Actually, I was just going to say, because I know that in order to, when they put their information in as a retirement, that they are eligible then for this stipend, so you answer my question. That's fine.
Yep.
Trustee Berry.
So, my thing was, it was discussed at their board meeting, and it was made... The public was made aware of it. And it wasn't for... I was notified, but it wasn't for three weeks or so that you finally... And I thought, "I'm not going to say nothing until..." Because she didn't turn in. But, I mean, I'm sure that they called you guys and asked for a reference and probably told you that we're going to... They didn't say they're going to hire her. Either way, it would be nice, you know, for us to get, once they get the resignation letter, to be notified right away.
Yeah. And we did not receive the resignation letter until after we sent you the information that she was going to Livonia because Dr. Lazar was respecting her time and was respecting her and not trying to force her to submit one. But then after some time, I asked Dr. Lazar to reach out to the Human Resources Department in Livonia to get confirmation, which she did. That's when we updated the board officially. We get a lot of reference checks. And I'm not going to go into specific employees, but there are specific employees that we get reference checks on, on a regular basis, who do not get the job. So, that is one of the reasons why we tend to hold off until we actually have that resignation letter in our hand.
Trustee Fawaz.
Is she getting paid for the time... The time that she was actually working in Livonia and before submitting her resignation?
No, she's actually not... I don't think she's due to start working in Livonia until August. If she is continuing to get paid right now, it's because she worked the full school year and their pay is spread out over the summer. So, anything that she's getting would be time already earned. It wouldn't be time not worked.
Time earned through...
For the 21, 22 school year.
From here?
Correct. So, unless she... She would have worked it out with payroll, and I'm not sure what decision they came to. She can either have her contract paid out in one lump sum or continue to receive her bi-weekly payments until her contract is paid off.
So, technically...
As of the resignation.
Yeah.
But technically, then, she's still on our books right now.
No. No.
So, teachers have an option to get paid either over 10 or 12 months?
We don't give the option. It's 12 months.
It's 12 months.
Yes. You get paid for 10 months of work spread out over 12 months.
Yeah. So, we still owe her for the 10 months that she worked, correct?
Correct.
But it's all based on when she submits her resignation date. And I... Penny, I can have Penny give you more of a detailed breakdown on how that will work. But if you put in your... So, usually what happens is, when somebody goes from one district to another, they work out between both payroll departments when they should put their resignation date in one district and when they should put their start date in the other district so they don't miss pay. Because you can't pay an employee working in two districts. So, Rachel, who oversees... Michelle. Michelle, who oversees that and payroll, she would have worked that out with all the employees upon their resignation date. So, and that's something that payroll does. The minute we get a resignation letter, HR gives that to payroll. Payroll reaches out to the employee and says, "We're going to create a separation date so you do not get paid by both districts."
At the same time.
You work it out between both districts when your resignation date will be for one and when your start date will be for the other so you don't miss pay.
So, never simultaneous.
Never simultaneous, no. Unless if we're keeping somebody on a contract basis because we need them to help us do something, but other than that, no.
And the... Sorry. And the other piece also, too, with some of the employees that switch from district to district, because their hire is not official until the board meeting, they sometimes will tend to hold their resignation letter until after the board meeting in their new district so that they know it's official, and then they'll submit the formal resignation to the current district they work in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trustee Sabo.
Based on the contract with the unions or even if we have something in policy for notification of resignation, do... Are they obligated to give us a certain time for a notification if they're going to another district where typically, if somebody says, "And I'm resigning and I'm giving you a two-week notice," you still have to pay them for those full two weeks if they're not getting paid by another district? Is that something we have on the books so that this type of stuff doesn't overlap and that the person is not in the building when they're actually been hired by another school district where they can still not be around and still get paid? Because to me, no offense, and I'm not speaking of anybody in particular, but they shouldn't be in any of our facilities if they're no longer working for us so that termination period gives us that buffer.
So, to Trustee Sabo's point, just before you respond, I believe our badge access, right? I don't know keys, badge access, and whatnot. You know, there's certain ways we can either hold their last pay until everything gets turned in and they don't have access. I don't know how that works, but, you know, corporate America has similar ways of doing that. So, just to piggyback off of Trustee Sabo's comments.
So, in the contract, there is nothing written in terms of giving us a two-week notice. That's something that we can look at in the future. It's actually something we... We tend not to run across that as a problem because what tends to happen is, when an employee of one district goes to another district, they get flagged in the payroll system. And they get flagged in the payroll system because they cannot be being paid by two districts at the same time. But I do not see... I see that being a helpful tool or if we put something in writing that says, "If you're choosing to go, we need..." You know, "We request a 10 to 14-day notice in order to be able to, number one, fill your position, especially if it's a teaching position, and, number two, to help us with the paperwork and the transition." So, I don't see that being an issue. That's something we can talk to the unions about adding in there.
Thank you.
And then, I'm sorry. And then it refers to, the minute someone is no longer with us, their badge is deactivated. Their direct supervisor collects their keys, and then their Google access is eliminated. And sometimes what they'll say is, you know, "Can we get a couple of days to pull all our files?" And David helps them on that as well.
That's where that two-week buffer is essential.
Yeah. So, that's something we can talk about with the unions.
With limited access to IT.
Yeah. Because I know David can download all their files if they choose to and send it to them to their new address.
Trustee Kaminsky.
My one other concern, and I'm not picking on anyone, but in regards to Mrs. Aberjamra, since you had to reach out and verify that, aren't administrators required to give at least two weeks' notice, if not a month? I mean, that's a big position that we needed to fill, and luckily, you were proactive and started advertising prior to getting the formal resignation. I just... I have concern that that happened and would like to make sure that we nib it in the bud and it doesn't happen in the future.
We can... That's actually an easier fix because what we can do within the administrative contracts, the non-union contracts, their contracts that the board approves, so on, so forth, we can add a statement in there on those where we're requesting 14 days, so on, so forth. And we can put that in there.
I would appreciate that.
Yeah. And we'll talk to legal about if they don't give us the 14 days, what...
It's enforceable.
You know, yeah, how can we enforce it? So, that's something we can do. Those are great ideas. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Trustee Berry.
So, my question is, if she left on that day, what happened with the benefits? Is she on Cobra or what?
Again, that's between... I'd have to have payroll answer that. I can't answer that. That's payroll's expertise.
So, can we get an answer to that?
It's when they work between each district to figure that out. So, I can have...
But if you said she resigned, when did you say her resignation letter was?
Go ahead if you want to answer that, Dr. Lazar.
Yeah. So, with this particular resignation, because it happened in the summer, some of the rules are not going to apply as clear-cut because, again, their benefits are on a yearly cycle.
Because she works... She pays... Yes.
So, she pays her... They pay their employee contribution. Again, it's split out. It's prior to. So, until the end of the benefits cycle for her year, it's going to end right before her new insurance cycle was going to start. And because these dates are falling in the summer, it... I don't want to say it makes it a moot point, but in a way, it does because she's already worked her obligation for those benefits and for that pay.
When did her contract end?
And so, that's why this... I'm sorry?
I'm sorry. When did her contract end? What day? Like, for the year?
June... So, June 30th is when the administrator contracts end and July 1st is when the renewal... The cycle. So, all of our administrator contracts are July 1st to June 30th. They run parallel to our fiscal calendar.
So, if she was done in June 30th, that means that as of now, she shouldn't have...
No, yes and no because she's already worked her 10 months. She's worked the days that she owes us for those 12 months' worth of pay and benefits.
So, technically, she can go another two months because she put in the work.
It's not another two months, but yeah, some... Kind of, along those lines.
It's paraded.
Yes.
The word is paraded.
Yes.
But once she... Or someone starts another district, they go on that insurance.
Correct.
They're completely off of their insurance plan.
Yes.
So, somebody resigns and they still have credit towards their insurance because they paid in advance and they still don't have another job, they can go into that credit as out. Once that credit's out, then they got to go to Cobra and they got to do all that other stuff. But once you officially start in a new district, you go into ORS, you go directly into that new district's plan. That's how the state of Michigan, it's an oversight. That's how they oversee so that people aren't double-dipping.
Okay. Thank you.
So, I'm just putting down my notes so we can get more information. Okay, so, from my understanding is, what we'll do is, in situations as such as discussed, when somebody is requesting resignation or retirement but chooses not to have it announced, we will send a confidential memo to the board just so you are aware. Good on that? Okay. All right. The next question that came up was just, we... There wanted to be some more of a discussion on the updates of possible changes in transportation routes.
Oh, two of them?
Andrew, you have one already? Linda, it's for you. Thank you. So, what I did here was, I just printed out the information that I had sent over to the board prior for the board's review. I'm going to let Andrea speak more to it than I. She's been doing a lot of the work behind this, her and Penny. But the idea here is that, when you look at our current busing, and this is the same busing that's been going on for years. So, this isn't like something that was changed recently and we want to change it again. This is us looking at what's more equitable for the students that need busing as well as what's more cost-efficient. And by making these adjustments, we're going to be able to bus students who currently live further than some students who have currently lived closer to Riverside. So, Andrea, did you want to just go through and just talk about a few key points and then we'll open up for questions?
The only transportation routes that we're looking at changing is eliminating the second run at Riverside. So, with the current walkout, the students across the street from Riverside, right, they are eligible for busing. There wasn't a uniform. I'll explain... I'll explain one second. So, that's the polyplot that the Transportation Department did, so I'll explain in just one second. So, what we did is, we worked with Dean Transportation, who works with Wayne Risa in changing the route. So, we did a mile walkout from Riverside, which is comparable to other districts in this area for a middle school because we have the crossing guards at Warren and Beach right here, is we did a mile walkout. But that mile was uniform, whereas before, it only went a mile up towards Telegraph, whereas the students who lived right across the street received a bus. So, in looking at it, we had two runs of buses here at Riverside and were supervising students before and after school because of the two runs, which also, with that... So, in the 989 students at Riverside were eligible for transportation with the existing walkout. 658 students rode the bus. So, with our new walkout, 619 students are eligible for transportation. So, when you look at your maps, kind of the confusing pieces, the maps aren't the same. So, the yellow is what we currently provide transportation to with the old walkout. The red is what we're eliminating.
I guess I would have rather have... I'm sorry. I guess I would rather have seen this entire thing on this and show what we're actually[1679.87] and show what we're actually eliminating.
Right, and so, right, so this is what Dean Transportation provided and we can get that to you. We just wanted to share what was communicated with us in terms of, it's called polyplot that they do it. And when they did the walkout, the red is the bus, is the students who we're eliminating the busing for. And they'll now be walkers to...
We're eliminating this one?
Yes.
So...
Only the red.
So here's the question. The buses that students were receiving from across the street, what was the capacity throughout the year that that bus was being used by those students?
It was not, it was not a great number. So they were going to stops and students weren't getting on the bus. And so that's kind of what came the need of, we're offering it and it's not, not being accepted. And then buses in other areas are far more congested because, and then after school, there's buses, students waiting and buses aren't full and we're running bus runs without capacity.
So looking at this, if we can do kind of like a pilot maybe, kind of like a no student left behind, to where if there is families or students in the area, you know, I'm not talking about across the street because of course they can, we have crossing guards for that, but maybe someone right on the boundary that's just a little bit ways away that needs a bus, let's keep that in mind just to listen to these individuals and at least see if it needs to be addressed. There probably isn't any, but just in case, I like to look at it that way because...
Well, and we have, like in the past, for kind of the students who may have been at Warren and Telegraph and not eligible before, but there was a need, we worked with families in those instances. You know, where a teacher or somebody may have advocated for a student instead of a parent or vice versa, we tried to address. And again, this comes, it's kind of, it's kind of dual-purpose. One, looking at the supervision of students after school. And also, we have a large number of students who we transport outside of the district and those bus runs are taking some of our highest-need students two hours on the bus because we're transporting students, you know, within close proximity. So we did, we, in doing this, we spoke to neighboring districts and they also, this walkout is standard for most, the one-mile walkout is standard for most schools.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Barry?
I guess I'm confused about this because if we're going to have more congestion at the school, how is that going to help us, number one? We're going to have more people backed up to Warren Avenue, which is already a problem. And to me, I refuse to put children's safety, you know, money is not...
No, no, it's not.
Going to make my decision on children's safety. If children need to get to school and you get one kid that hops that bus because maybe their parents work, we have to really think about that. So I guess the confusion here is where is Warren Avenue on this map? Because the way that it's covered up, I can't...
On the red man?
Yes, that's Warren Avenue.
So I, we can, I can get you another copy where it shows where the school is.
Trustee, are you good? Trustee Barry?
No, I just wanted to see, I mean, are we, are we having any of the students, I can't really make out this map like I want to...
It's Hass.
Right, are we having any students cross any major streets on this besides Warren Avenue?
No.
And Beach.
Warren and Beach, from, they're not crossing Ford Road, they're not crossing Telegraph.
So, but they are crossing just at Warren and Beach?
Yes, where crossing guards are provided.
So trustee Sivak?
Quick question. And I'm speaking strictly from my own personal experience with my children. I know we used to walk two miles plus to school, but this isn't, this is not that. And to her point, safety first, no doubt. But I have a question just strictly on my neighborhood alone, okay? When I drop my kids off at the bus stop, I have an option of 718, 721, or 724 for three different bus stops within a, call it three-block radius. Okay? If that's happening in my neighborhood, how many other neighborhoods is that happening in? And instead of having three pickups, why don't we have one pickup? Instead of these kids walking a mile, let them walk a block or two extra to be picked up by a bus. So instead of us looking at this the way we're looking at it, I think we need to start with the routes, the number of stops. I don't care about a second run if the first run was quick, right? I mean, if one run is taking 30 minutes and two runs can take 35 minutes, right? Then why not look at that by minimizing the number of stops? Because I can tell you on my street in the afternoon when the elementary kids come, there's one that stops off on Lawrence, one that stops off on, I'm sorry, Doc Stater, Lawrence, and then Wilson. And I'm sitting there going, why aren't they just dropping off on one, for example? Or instead of picking up on Whitefield, Kenmore, and then Gully, why don't they just pick up on Kenmore? That's, I think we're looking at it from a different perspective. We need to look at it from a time perspective.
When we also talked to you about having people commit to transportation, where we are sending, we're sending a request to say, you're eligible, are you going to commit to transportation? Because what we're finding is students are eligible, but parents are still transporting. So we're building routes based on students and housing, instead of who is actually in need of transportation.
So what is a commitment? Every day? Is that a commitment? Where I have to bring my kids every day to the bus? Because nobody's going to commit to that. And the reason they can't is...
No, but the parents who know that they are not going to send their students on the bus at all, we can eliminate them from, right?
Okay, so...
Because some parents know from the start.
How many of those do we have?
We, well, last year we were able to eliminate 250 families.
That never rode the bus.
That never rode the bus.
So if we come out and we say, if you haven't ridden the bus in the first 20 days, you won't be able to ride the bus the rest of the year?
Well, not, no, no, not necessarily.
It's too late then, no, anyway.
Right, it's the idea of if you know that you don't feel comfortable sending your student on the bus, because we do have families that have said that they prefer to transport to and from regardless, and they're able to.
But how would that affect our strategy?
Because then we're building routes based on where students are.
If they give back, I'm sorry, if they give back to you, and I'm not putting you on the spot, I'm just thinking strategy.
No, I know.
When do they need to give back to you for that? By what, August 1st, August 15th?
Well, that's what we were saying. This is, this is the informational of what do we want to do?
We can't get parents to respond when there's things that are important.
So what we, what we have is we have every eligible family who's eligible for busing. Each of them is going to receive a postcard. On that postcard, you can either return it or you can do it electronically. Then we're going to follow up. Transportation's going to follow up with whomever does not return that postcard. The goal is that we want to hit as many of these homes as possible. Ultimately, what we're trying to do is be more proactive to, like what you said, reduce the number of bus runs, know specifically who would like to have a bus. And then from there, we can look at the runs, the times, how many buses we need, so on and so forth, and how many kids can be put on each bus in order for it to be efficient. So through this process, we're just, we're being proactive in terms of identifying whom will want to ride the bus.
But I get it, but if we can't get people to respond, right, it's impossible for them, they're not going to respond unless you look at it, and this is a little harsh, but it's something to think about. Unless you respond whether your child is going to be bused or not, we're going to assume your child is not going to be bused.
That's what, that's the angle we're going.
Okay.
That if you don't respond, you will not be...
And you cannot get this reversed after the first week. If you notify us within the first week, we'll take a look at it. But after the first week, you're driving the rest of the year.
Because again, Crestwood is not different than any other district.
No, I understand.
Dean is struggling with getting drivers. They, they're sending postcards...
Every district is.
Right, I know, and they're sending postcards to our community, trying to solicit drivers for our community because, again, transportation isn't a requirement. And I, and I'm not saying that as a threat or anything, but that's the...
It's a necessity, though.
It is, but some districts...
Not a requirement, but it's a necessity.
But some districts are cutting it entirely, or they're going a week on and a week off. And so we're trying to avoid playing limbo with where families aren't able to plan accordingly and trying to address, you know, meet, meet parents where they're at and get some communication in terms of how we can work smarter in terms of addressing the needs of the community.
Thank you.
I just want to add, so I completely agree with eliminating the multiple number of buses, the bus, or the first run, second run, third, I think that's bad. But, and reevaluating all the stops. But also, while we are dissecting this and going through it, it is a complete, complete nightmare dropping off and picking up in the morning and in the afternoon for parents. So for sure, the safety is huge. So what we were doing before, I don't think worked, you know, because like she said, the line gets all the way backed up to Warren, you have people cutting, you have all kinds of mess. And we don't even have the capacity for all the cars that come. So I think we also need to look at a plan of how we're going to handle that. Because now, especially in eliminating some of these riders, now we've increased the drops. So potentially, we're looking at it looking worse.
But it's one of those, too, when you look at the numbers, 600 are eligible and 600 are riding. So our hope is, is that we're kind of meeting people where they are, right? Because again, if 1,000 are eligible and 600 are riding, maybe it's, if we're building it based on that, we don't have to have the two runs because we're truly building it on those who are accepting transportation is the hope.
Or if we have 900 that are eligible, maybe with the reevaluation of the stops, we fill the buses have, you know, we don't have second or third run, so we have less parents dropping off, eliminating a lot of the congestion.
Something you have to keep in mind is number of bus drivers. And a lot of times what happens is there's a second or third run because you have limited bus drivers, so you have to have that same bus driver go on one side of town, pick up kids, drop them off so that those kids aren't sitting on the bus for an extra 15 minutes, and then they come back to the other side. The problem that we're facing is the same problem everyone's facing, is the fact that there aren't, we're short bus drivers. And what we're hoping is through doing this process, we're going to identify. We do not believe that adjusting this is going to increase the traffic at Riverside. Those that are driving their children to school are going to continue driving their children to school. And, you know, the, you know, the fact that we're able to use Warren Valley's parking lot and throughout the year, the school made adjustments, we have to understand something. All of our schools are landlocked. We are not in a situation where we have schools that are sitting on acres of land with a lot of open space. All of our schools are landlocked. And if we want to truly adjust what is happening in terms of pickup and drop-off, it's, that's, we've talked about this as a board in the past, that's a bond issue. Because we'd have to put hundreds of thousands of dollars to reconfigure all of our schools and how we can do it. Actually, I have the information from the last time the board requested that information. And it was something that was presented for a bond. And so it's something that we still have and we can look at again. But I just want to make it clear to the community, until we have available space to have true pickup and drop-off at all our schools, we're going to have a congestion problem.
Maybe even staggering, and I'm just throwing different ideas, but maybe staggering times, start and end times for different grade levels, which I know would be also at a nightmare for the bus driver. But staggering their times to lessen the congestion out there.
And the contracts and teachers' contracts and...
Trustee Jeanette?
Yeah, it might be a problem.
I think the issue, the other issue with that is people have multiple children who attend different grades and that's, and for those that want to drop off their kids and not drop, ride the bus, that just adds a whole other layer to that. So this would be RMS, and I don't know why I pulled up my phone so I could look at the actual map. So we would be eliminating anybody from Inkster, so Inkster to RMS, and then the other, most, the majority of Inkster to Hass, down to Telegraph. So this entire rectangle almost would be eliminated.
Because it's a mile walkout from Riverside.
Because it's a mile walkout. I mean, in all reality, the district, our district's not that big. So, I mean, if you took a radius of our district, we're not...
And most districts for middle schools do a mile and a half.
I mean, they probably also have the availability to drop off for parents to bring their kids to school in a much, in a much safer way. It's, so we, we closed the gate now so parents can't pull in in the morning. But all that's done is they pull in from the other side.
Now you have in and out at the same gate.
It's in and out of the same gate.
And it's, it's just, so in the beginning of the year, we had somebody out there. Once it got cold, they never went back out there to direct traffic. And somebody literally, and it was working, but then the light at the golf course takes, it's like turns red in like 30 seconds, so not many cars get, are able to come in and out. And then you have people cutting through. So if me trying to be the good person goes all the way to the back of the line, it takes me 20 minutes to get out because everybody thinks that they're more important than the other and they cut through and I slowly am able to leave. But I know there's not going to be a perfect solution. I do think that the first thing would be to survey them, but what's, who's to say that if you tell them, you have to decide, that they're not just going to say, okay, we're going to ride the bus and they don't ride the bus anyways?
Just so you're clear, too, if there's no guarantee, so this is, this is us working with Dean, trying to work with the number of drivers that they have. So it's, it's the double-edged sword because...
Is there any, any way of tracking who's actually riding the bus? Do we know who's actually riding? Is there any type of scanner or something they can...
There is, with what they've done, there is less than 500 that ride it consistently.
So...
So that was the idea of if you, if in changing the walkout and changing the number of students who are eligible, it's the idea of...
Those may be your most frequent riders. I mean, you know what I mean? They might be your most frequent riders. They, they really are your most at-risk. I mean, if you look at demographics within the community, they really might be.
But, but again, it's, this is just kind of the thought of if Dean doesn't have drivers, then we don't have transportation at all. So it's trying to find ways to work within it. Because again, school districts like Livonia, who the schools are serving small areas, they're going a week on and a week off for busing.
So realistically, if we only had consistently about 500 and something students, would we just need one route?
Not necessarily, because if you're going this student at this house and then 17 houses down, like, again, how do you build based on, how do you build on that, too? Because if it's, if it's 500 kids, but it's still our entire district, you're still having that much time to get from location to location. And now, mind you, all of this has to go through the county and has to be plotted. Like, you just can't do this on your own. It's all through the county consortium and all of this is approved at Wayne Rees, the routes, everything. This is not something that's done in isolation.
Trustee Kaminsky?
Hi, I think we're missing something really big. And let me preface what happened five years ago. We had a fifth-grade girl hit by a car. She had crossed Warren Road. Fifth and sixth grade is still elementary. The rules for elementary are different than they are for middle school. And I think we're losing sight of this. And the little girl survived. She was tragically injured, had a brain injury, had multiple fractures. I get that they may be right across Warren or right across Beach, but if they're fifth and sixth graders, they're considered elementary. And I have a real problem with putting those kids at risk. I don't know the solution to give you, but I, I think we need to look at that. And the other suggestion would be to maybe get with the Traffic Bureau to get their insight on if they think there's going to be a change in the flux of cars. Because Warren is blocked frequently and I, we all know that. It's, it's a mess. And, you know, there's not enough police to patrol it. But my greatest concern here, you know, and not that I don't care about all the kids, is our fifth and sixth graders. And I haven't heard any mention of that, and they are considered elementary.
But the county has approved this, so with the crossing guards, it meets the requirement.
Even though they're elementary and not considered middle school?
Because there's a crossing guard. If there wasn't a crossing guard. But that's why they can't cross Ford Road and come over because now you're crossing two major streets and they're outside of the mile boundary.
Okay.
They're within the boundary, they have the crossing guard, it's acceptable. But I understand where you're coming from.
Trustee Barry?
So I guess my question is, what's, how's enrollment then? Have we had an increase in number?
Enrollment has stayed steady.
Stayed steady?
Mm-hmm.
So can we afford to lose students if we don't offer them busing and then maybe they decide to go virtual elsewhere?
Well, if we're looking at...
Or school of choice or...
If we're looking at worst-case scenario, I mean, we're, you know, that's, that's a caveat that we can't predict. We're trying to be proactive and trying to take this process forward so that we can be more efficient as a school district. If individuals want to leave our district because they're not going to be bused, that's something I can't predict.
Okay, so then the other question would be us taking back our busing. I mean, we do own the building. They're practically using it for next to nothing. Do they own the buses? Did we, were the buses sold off? Sue, were you around when that happened?
I was around before you, so yeah.
Okay, so were the buses sold off? Do we own the buses or...
We do not own the buses.
So we would have to repurchase buses, correct?
Yeah, we would not be able to board, do it.
We wouldn't be?
No. You're looking at multimillion dollars in purchasing of buses. You're looking at multimillion dollars in insurance claims, but also servicing the buses, paying the bus drivers, paying the insurance.
We're paying a pretty hefty amount to them. We're paying millions.
We're, we're paying a very competitive rate with Dean. I can, I, if the board chooses to go that route, we will explore it.
Is that something that we could explore?
We can explore it, but I would highly...
Okay, other districts are doing it. I'm just trying to, you know, think of...
If they've had the equipment for years, a lot of it's outdated, the maintenance, then you're, then you're talking about employees again.
Can the ester funds be used for that?
No.
No?
And the...
Our ester funds are already accounted for for our construction work and for the social-emotional learning that we're using, plus the technology.
Dean Transportation is sending postcards to every household within Dearborn Heights. If anyone's interested in becoming a bus driver, this won't be an issue if we can get members of our community to sign up to be bus drivers within Dearborn Heights for Dean Transportation. Because that's, that's the dilemma.
Yeah, I, this is, it's just a tough spot. I get it. Financially, it's a tough spot because of the fact that they can't find employees. Ideally, it would be great to be able to operate our own, but I, I think the larger, larger school districts that have been doing it forever can get away with it. 4,000 kids next to 22... Um, four thousand kids next to twenty-two thousand is a big difference. But the other thing is obviously the cost, but most importantly, I think to Trustee Kaminski's point about the young ones, I know, do we only have one crossing guard at Warren Beach or two? Because there's two intersections.
What? They cross the same intersection? They cross?
I get it, but we're, we're talking. If we're going to have a larger flow of kids walking, we should have at least.
That's the city of Dearborn Heights. So we can work with them.
We have to have. Yeah, we'd have to work with the city.
I, I would say one on, on the northeast corner, one on the southwest corner, southwest, northeast.
I agree, Mo.
Um, I agree too, but going back to that, I thought that they didn't, uh, they weren't paying for this corner because it was a middle school.
No, they're paying for it.
Cause it's elementary.
Trustee Jean.
So with us eliminating such a larger area, you then will have students trying, potentially trying to cross from Warren to the other side of, you know, and then so we're now, we have a hard time finding a crossing guard for even this location here. Honestly, I'm, I was so happy to see the same crossing guard all year here. She was a young girl. She did a great job. But we definitely will need additional crossing guards and just, if you think finding a bus driver is hard, I.
So what I would recommend is allow us to pull the data.
Okay.
Um, part of that data we're pulling are those that are currently bused in terms of, you know, would they still want to be bused type of data? Once we pull that data, we can bring more clarity to it. No matter what we do, we're going to do what is in the best interest of the kids. Safety's first. But we're looking at options. You know, we can't, we don't want to keep trudding in mud. We want to look and see how are some ways we can do some things differently. And it does come back to what Trustee Sabal said in terms of, you know, why do we have three stops? We agree with you. You know, and, and what, you know, as mentioned in terms of safety of the fifth, we agree. But we want to look at how can we do it better and more efficient? You know, it's, it's not about just, this is the right way or this is the wrong way. Cause as you've all said, there is no like perfect solution to this, but we want to take in opportunity to look and see what we can do differently.
So Dr. Masalim, I think everyone here speaking is concern of the kid's safety is number one. That's priority one. So whatever data we're pulling, whatever we're trying to do, I really believe that everyone sitting here agrees, safety first for these kids, right? Um, the second thing I want to bring up is these routes are only as good as the drivers. So if you don't have bus drivers, these routes don't mean anything. Cause if no one shows up to move the kids in these buses, the routes are no good anyway. So we really have to lean on our community to really step up and fill out the data. And if there's someone that really needs transportation because it's a, you know, mom and dad work or single family, whatever, a single parent, whatever it is, I would like that data to come back to the administration, at least populate the data to see how we can at least, you know, entertain these people. Um, maybe showing them where to walk to the nearest, it might be behind them and they don't even know it, right? So we just got to look at the data, um, really broad on a map maybe and see, well, if there's homes in this area that need to be bused, but around the corner, there's a bus, you know, we got to give them that option and it would help. I really believe that would help. And Dean should be doing that. Um, once the data comes back. Trustee Sabal.
Again, this may be totally out of my, my wheelhouse, my knowledge base, but if you're going to have parents that aren't going to be able to bust their kids and they still got to go and come home and drop the kids off and pick them up. I know in middle school, it's a little different than you would with, with elementary school and latch key and all that other stuff. We should probably look at some kind of programming for those parents that can't get here at a certain time. Or want to drop their kids off before school starts because they got to be at work at seven. Right? Like if we're going, let's just make sure we're not closing off all avenues to the parents to say, sorry, this is the way it is, right? We should be able to do that. Look, again, if the safety comes first and the money comes second, which it always should, then we need to have options for parents. I don't care if we have one or two classrooms where kids can go in and get some extra study work or whatever. But give these parents options because it's tough when you have two parents working with nowhere to put the child.
Appreciate it. Will do. Okay, all right. So we'll come back to the board with, um, some updated data. I know Andrea has been working on that, so hopefully have that data soon. Uh, and then the next item is just a, um, update on where we're at in terms of construction. Um, oh, sure. Thank you. So you should have two for you guys. You sure? Thank you. So, um, this was a memo that was sent to me by Penny a couple of days ago and her and I had a conversation. She's on vacation today. But, uh, we discussed some things that are happening is you can tell you probably been driving around, seeing that there's work being done. Um, at all of our sites currently, except Cherry Hill hasn't started yet as we're getting ready to go out on the bid process on that. And we're finalizing some things with the athletic facilities to get out on bid on that as well. But just to briefly go through this real quick. Um, at Highview, uh, what you'll, you'll notice is, you know, they've been preparing the ground. They've taken down, uh, multiple trees. They've cleaned up the area. They flattened the area and, um, they're getting ready to start, uh, pouring cement, getting things ready to roll. Um, things are happening and they're happening quick. Uh, there's a couple of things that we've asked for an additional quote on. Uh, if you look at items of note, we asked for an additional quote from the construction company to replace the remaining portion of the asphalt near the playground equipment. Um, a portion of it had been scheduled for replacement. However, after doing a walkthrough, the review we felt would be beneficial to have the entire area resurfaced. So we figure, look, if, you know, if we're in the process, let's see how much it's going to cost to do it all. Um, we also requested a quote, uh, to, uh, for an additional strip of asphalt that is at the edge of the property. So there's, at the edge of the property, there, it's, there's empty space. There's no reason therefore it's, it's wasted space. So we want to put some asphalt down because then that'll help with, um, with the students in the playground and, and different things of such. Um, we're going to, in order to make sure that we match the, the wall, um, we're going to use structural glaze block. Um, and it has extended lead time of eighteen weeks. So this is something that might draw us back a little bit because it's foundational. But what we found is that we can either speed it up and use something that doesn't match and is ugly, or we can do it right and use something that is going to match. So it's going to slow us down a little bit, but it's for the better met long term. Um, and we're going to lower the foundation by three inches in order to make it all fit and be smooth. So Highview is moving pretty quick. Things are moving. We just have that, 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 uh, lead. We got to wait on that material. Hillcrest.
Uh, before we move on from Highview, Dr. Masalim, can we ensure once all the updates are done, that we check out that HVAC system that's in the library?
Yes.
It was told that it would be working. I remember I have a conversation with Ms. Talib during the, um, the students had a presentation and it, uh, she was told that it's not working until after the expansion and work that's being done.
Okay.
So let's just have a follow up to make sure the HVAC working in the library.
I'll put that in my notes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, for Hillcrest, y'all see Hillcrest is moving pretty fast as well. Oh, did you, was there another question for Highview? My apologies.
I wouldn't know. You said it and I guess I'm just reading it. So that's the, the lead time of eighteen weeks is they can't do anything until that.
So they're going to do everything around it until they get that brick. And then once they have that brick, they can start building from the foundation up. So we're going to be, we're going to be behind schedule a little bit because we need to match that brick.
That's, it's a long time.
It is. It is. And that's one of the things that we knew we were going to run into this year with delays in part and supplies because of everything that's going on.
How does that affect? Well, that doesn't then because what was added to the contract was that unless it was out of their control, that they would not be charged additional.
Correct. So if it, if, if it's a supply issue.
Yeah.
You know.
Okay.
But these are things that we're going to deal with throughout.
Is that brick, um, how off is the next available brick? Is it pretty off?
Yes, very much so.
Very off. We don't want to ice sore for the community either.
Correct. Cause here was the other option. We could have got that other brick, but then you put this plastic barrier around it, which would have been very, it wouldn't, would not have, maybe just put it this way, I, I wouldn't want that.
It would have looked terrible in three years.
It would have, yes.
Was that the initial one that we were looking to purchase or did that change? We were looking to get this, the one that's got the lead time of eighteen weeks.
Yes, we were looking to get the one that has the lead. No, well, when, when they, when they pulled back the concrete and they looked for the brick to match is when we identified that we, it was going to be harder to find that brick that we need for the foundation.
So it's going to be visible.
It's going to be visible, yes. It is going to be visible. If it wasn't going to be visible, it wouldn't be an issue.
I, I know. Just because you said when you pulled back the concrete, it wasn't initially visible.
No, but because we're going, because we were building off of the foundation and growing on the outside, you're going to see it. Now, one thing you have to keep in mind is remember, we're doing these projects under ESR funding and ESR funding is only for a certain amount of time. As long as the projects are in place, our funding is secured. So this is why we had to move on this now, even with the supply chain issues. So these are things that we knew were going to be an issue, but it's, the, the, the pros outweigh the cons, if, if I can say that. So Hillcrest, Hillcrest is moving pretty fast as well. Um, we are going to have, and it's attached to this, it's in the back. We do have one change that we're going to have to make at Hillcrest. Uh, when Hillcrest came back from the permitting, by the way, all of our projects received the permits. They've all been approved. But when Hillcrest came back from the state permitting, the, uh, state fire marshal has requested that we update some of the areas in the building where there's going to be the expansion, uh, to meet the fire code. So with that, we received a quote of thirteen thousand six hundred from the company that's doing the construction. So that's going to be added to the cost of Hillcrest. But we're still under, we're still at and under around the amount we've had budgeted for ESR. But as I told you from before, any additional costs that will come in, the board will be updated immediately. And this is one of the additional costs. And this is the meet fire code by the state of Michigan. Um, also items of note, um, oh, my apologies. I double upped the Highview structural glaze block with Hillcrest. So that doesn't matter for Hillcrest. Uh, National Time has been contacted, uh, and we're getting an additional quote from the constructive construction company to remove the directly in front, the tree directly in front of the main office. Um, because of sewer issues and different issues that we're finding, um, as we go through this process. Uh, DTE has been contacted to come out and remove an existing pole. Uh, so they're saying it's going to take about five to eight weeks to do that. Um, there's a note here that currently there are three light poles on the back of our property that can, that connect to this pole. So the problem is everybody's saying, well, that's not our pole. That's not our pole, but they're all using the pole for their lines. So we have to make sure whose it is, what it is before we remove it. So. Um, and, um, from the last I spoke to Penny, she was going to be meeting with them, uh, upon her return from vacation this week, next week. And then they're relocating the alarm panel because of where the construction is taking place. Uh, Kenlock, so Kenlock, they fenced it. They put in, they're starting to work on the ground. Uh, the wall, they've installed the wall on the interior of the building so that kids can't walk out to the construction area. Uh, that was one of the things that Kenlock, they had to be done immediately. Uh, the materials and the equipment are being delivered. This was as of last week. So I actually, uh, been going by each school each day. Today I did not, so I can't give you a, a, an actual eye on site today, but the last week I did. Um, and they're removing the dead trees. And all these dead trees, as we've talked about before, their roots are impacting the, the plumbing and the sewage systems. So we're working on that. Plus that's hopefully we're working on reconnecting those drains as discussed in the last board meeting. Uh, because of that flooding and so on and so forth in, in the, um, in the, uh, in the field area. Uh, Cherry Hill, the plans are being finalized. Uh, we'll have a big packet getting ready to go out soon. Uh, the athletic facility, uh, they've, uh, we got a company who came out, rolled the field. They flattened it. We've been watering it. Uh, we're trying to get it as, you know, we're, we're getting it re, re seeded, get it ready for this football season, for the soccer season, to have the best we can.
Can I comment? I'm sorry. Um, I drive by there every morning because that's my route to work and, um, the sprinkler system has been stuck like for hours upon hours, um, in the same spot. And I don't know if they're aware of it because it's early in the morning. So it's like just shooting in one spot, the middle of the.
I'll ask them. But what, what time of day?
Um, about seven, seven thirty. Um, if you go and come back, you'll notice that it's in the same spot the whole time.
I know for three days, they were supposed to soak up the field, like really, really soak it up and do this work. I don't know if that has anything to do with what.
It has nothing to do with it because it's every day.
Yeah.
I'll check with them. I will follow up with them. Thank you. Um, they've also, they've worked on the drains around the field. They've cleaned them out to identify which drains they're going to use for the drainage for the new turf and the new facility. Um, and then the timeline for the bids will be released very soon. We're hoping to get those bids out, uh, within the next month, if not sooner. And, you know, so basically where we're at is we're at the preliminary phases. Things are moving. Uh, and I want to say, you know, it's very exciting to see things are moving. And, um, that's where we are in terms of construction up to this point.
Um, two things. Were we able to add more dirt and upgrade the football fields before some of the, um, summer practices and things that were going on? I know they had, you know, certain sessions that kids signed up for. And then my other comment was when we get the bids, can we get a bid, um, for phase one that just has the track and the football field separate from all the other things? Because just like when we did the bond, critical needs are the football field and the track. And although it would be really nice to have some of the other things like the scoreboard and the bleachers and everything, I think we have to look at critical needs first.
So we can do that. Um, a lot of times our bids may come in where if some people will combo it and give us a better price.
Sure. And, and I understand that.
The other piece too in that is when we put the new field in, in the new track, we got to run new wiring underneath.
Yeah, the boxes and the scoreboard need to be ripped out.
Everything.
That's got to be with phase one because they got to lay all.
They have to let, yeah, they're going to have to rip that all out because that's where they're going to have to put the new turf. So we have to put a new scoreboard in there. And we, we're going to have to put a new fit stands because where the turf and the track end, they have to anchor the new stands. I'll ask the architects when they put out the bids to try to put them out separately and see what we can get. And then when we bring it back to the board, I just want the board aware that there's, some of these things may have to happen together, but we can still try to do it that way and bring it back to the board to see where we're at in terms of cost. Um, as for the dirt, we did some patchwork, nothing extensive pre, prior to what we're currently doing because we did have to soak the field, roll the field and do all this, which we couldn't do before all the mini camps because then the field would not have been accessible at all.
Okay.
So, but that's happening now because the teams know that they can't use certain areas and they don't need all those areas. So that's where we're at at that point.
Thank you. So although I know we probably should have thought about this before, but will there be any, I don't know if we've discussed this before. So elementary schools with all of the construction going on, once school starts, I mean, we know we're not going to be done by then.
Yeah.
Where will they go outside?
To play.
To play. Will there be any place for them to go outside?
So the problem that we're going to face is this. We can't put in new playground equipment right now. And because if we put in new playground equipment, first and foremost, it has to be ADA compliant. Which, so a lot of our playground equipment is not. Secondly, once you put playground equipment in, you cannot take it out.
Take playground equipment out.
But we're going to have areas for the kids to have space to go out. Yes. I just wanted to be clear though, because I, I wanted, I wanted to be known that there may not be playground equipment, but there'll be areas for children to go out.
I wouldn't expect us to put something in a place that it's not going to stay or not receive that.
Yeah.
I'm just saying a space for them to go out, have balls to throw around, whatever.
Yeah, of course.
Jump ropes, whatever, something for them.
And again, I want to reiterate to the board and to the community. It's, it's not, it's, it's, this is going to be a process. And, you know, we are landlocked, so we don't have a lot of space where we can move people around and do different things as we expand. But this limited disruption is going to be for long-term gains and we're looking forward to that.
Trustee for what?
Um, what is the upgrade in the doors for the Hillcrest and the ten percent markup on the glass?
Let me go to my notes.
It's the last page. Looking at the invoice.
Yeah.
I think forty-five minutes.
Oh, that's, that's all the, um, fire code updates needed. This is all fire code. What you see here is what the state fire marshal said we have to update in the building for our permit to be approved.
Wasn't this all in our prior, um, quote from them or within our, um?
No, this was not because these are currently existing areas that because of where the expansion is going, we have to update these for fire code.
And so the markup, is this for the, just the better material or just in general the cost?
It's, they're, they add a ten percent markup just in case costs come in a little bit higher than they would they project.
So this could actually be less?
It could be less.
Okay.
Trustee Barry.
If we're done with, uh, all that, before we adjourn, I did have some questions that I, I received and I have written down. If we can, are we done with all? With the construction update?
I'm, I'm all set. There are no more questions.
Okay, um, so I had, uh, asked about summer school, about the numbers. And I was very disappointed to see, um, And I was very disappointed to see the enrollment, because this was our opportunity to take advantage of bringing our kids back up to where they needed to be. That's what the ESSER funds were primarily for too, is to, because the data is showing our kids are not meeting their need, the needs are not being met for them to bring those grades up. What happened, like, why did we not get more students? Was everybody offered summer school? I know that there were staff members that actually called me and said that they were called the night before and told that they don't have to come to work, because there wasn't enough students. So, like, what happened?
Nothing happened, it's based on the number of students and families that volunteered. This is not something that we can force students to do.
So there was only thirty, how many was it for Riverside? I don't have the numbers.
I don't, I don't have the numbers, it was sent to the board.
We have a thousand students at Riverside, and we only had, I mean, this was our prime opportunity to, you know what I mean? This is, this was, I know that all the districts are having their summer schools and their numbers are up there. I just would have liked to see more of our kids taking advantage of this.
I don't know what other districts are doing differently than what we're doing, other than having, some districts are using, they're having longer days and longer summer school hours, which to me, I would say, a lot of kids don't want to do, but this is
They're doing it, but I'm trying to say is, we should, we should be, we needed to really push for this.
This is voluntary.
I understand, it's voluntary.
Dr. Masalim, if you may, pull the data that trustee Barry is asking for.
The data, I believe, is already
Follow up in an email.
All right.
Pull the data that trustee Barry is asking for, send it to her and the board.
But I just wish that we would have pushed harder, because I think this was our opportunity to
May I, may I, may I please?
Dr. Masalim has the floor.
Trustee Barry and to the board. We cannot force students to come to summer school.
I understand.
We reached out to families, teachers reached out to families, the school reached out to families. There were specific students who were reached out to and said, we think your child should be in this program. Families chose not to send their children. Therefore, we had to staff our summer school based on the number of students who chose to attend our summer school program. We cannot force them to attend. The only, but I don't want the community to think that we did not do our due diligence. We did our due diligence. The only students that we can technically force to come to summer school is because we hold the diploma, our high school students who are failing classes, because they need a credit recovery. For our younger students, we cannot. I know that the coaches, I want to talk about the literacy and numeracy coaches, the teachers, the administrators, counselors, reached out to families. And whomever agreed to become part of the program, we allowed them in. Secondly, we are using our ESSER funding for the summer school, but our district is using ESSER funding for our current needs. And that's our infrastructure needs. So I don't want the community to think that we're not using our finances appropriately.
So then, my question is, why, if we knew the numbers were so low, why did we wait till the night before to notify staff that they didn't have jobs?
That is new to me, so I would love to have that information of whom was notified last minute.
Ask, ask Ms. Laney, she would know. Ms., is it Lane?
Ms. Laney is teaching summer school.
Which one ran the summer schools, is it Ms. Lane, I know, is it Laney, is it Kinlock? I confused the two. I'm sorry? Riverside. Okay.
We can speak to whomever.
I personally, I mean, I, I understand, and I work for a district and whatever. I think we have to be
May I ask, when you were given this information, I wish it would have been shared with us at that time, so we could have looked at it immediately.
I wasn't in town, remember? I was out of town for a couple of weeks, and I didn't think that it was fair, so I was messaged. I said, you know what, I'm not in town. When I get back in town, I will let you know, once I ask that question. But people were very upset about that.
This is the first I've heard of people being upset, and so.
They were upset.
Again, I can only solve whatever's brought to me.
Trustee Fawaz?
The other, I'm not done, I'm sorry, I had some other questions.
Go ahead.
Okay. My other question was, for instructional coaches, I understand, how are we training them? Are we, I know that this is all new to all these instructional coaches. Are we sending them to any type of workshops? Are we giving them professional development? How do they know what to do to go in and to assist our staff members that need that support?
So they're working in PLCs, they're attending RESA seminars. A large group just went to the PLC conference in Grand Rapids,
I saw that.
which was very beneficial. And this is going to be, this fall will be the first time that we have all our coaches in place, where they can all start working together. Additionally, we're working with neighboring districts to look at different things that they're doing and have camaraderie to discuss. How did you get to this level, how did you get to that level, to support one another on what works?
Okay, so do they have to fill out logs, so we know which classrooms they went into? Does the board have any privy to seeing that stuff, or?
Well, I don't, they do fill out information in terms of who they're working with and who they're not working with, and how they're working, and different things of such. I don't want to go down that route of supplying the board information.
We're going to have to, because when I get calls that a parent with a teacher that really needed the support, and she's afraid of coming, I'm not mentioning names, I don't care what happens. She's afraid of coming out and saying something, so she's not targeted. Her instructional coach did not come into her classroom. I'm just bringing it to you now.
First and foremost, trustee Barry, being that this is a public meeting, you saying that somebody feeling they're going to be targeted is making an assumption, excuse me, allow me to finish.
I'm telling you what I was told.
Allow me to finish, please. Is you making an assumption that this administration team targets people? That's the statement you're making publicly. I'm asking, that if that is not the case, and that is not what you feel, then don't, please do not use that language.
Okay, I'm just telling you. It's not to argue, it's to bring you something to make you aware, that it would be nice to just make sure that we follow through.
Your point was made, I understand. I think any, I'm not going to say assumptions, but any information that's coming from any one of our district employees should be going through HR.
Absolutely, and that's exactly what I said. I don't want to, but
If they're not willing to do so, those conversations should be, should be had with HR, and the information needs to be disclosed, if it's coming up in this meeting. So we should go back to this employee.
They wanted, right, they wanted administration to be aware that they would appreciate if somebody follows through, to make sure that everybody's doing what they need to be doing.
And I just want the administration to know, any questions that you have information on to answer to any trustee, you're more than welcome to do so. If not, take it back, gather the data, gather the information you need, and then email the board correspondingly. But I want to ensure that there's no assumptions made about the district, about the administration, or any trustees by anyone. I mean, that's something we need to keep out of, those are assumptions and those are opinions, those are not to come into a board meeting.
I'm sorry, I have another question. He needs, just as administration, okay, just with culture being the background, you absolutely need to make clear that the administration is not targeting people, because that, that is huge, so yes, I think publicly you should address that part.
She never said, the administration, she said she doesn't want to be. That's what I said.
Said she don't want to be.
No, 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 that's not what I said. I said that she didn't want to be.
Is there examples of the past that the administration has done so?
Is there what?
Is there any examples that make her aware?
I don't know, I'm just telling you that they just wanted to, you know, they asked very kindly if administration can just follow up with the new positions to make sure that they're doing what they're supposed to be doing, if there's a log or something that can be used.
Okay.
Okay.
Trustee Barry, you have another item?
I do. I know that the state had given us permission to take, remember, I had asked you the question, and a question came up about, the state had given us permission to, people who didn't have their certifications, there was an extension on that. Is that being followed again this year?
So if it's a high-need position,
Okay.
okay, if it's considered a high-needs position, and I'll give you an example. Like a teacher, ASD teacher, all special ed positions, basically. Science, math. If somebody comes in, if we, if we have to, we have to interview. If through the interview process, we don't identify someone that we want in that position, that is a high-needs position, we can request an emergency certification for a certain amount of time, and that person has to become certified within that amount of time. I believe it was one, one year? But every year, we have to repost that position. And if we still don't find somebody who's certified for that position, then we can continue that emergency certification.
With that same
That, that has not changed.
Okay. All righty, I'm sorry, was there one more? Oh, and then, I know that the lawsuit was mentioned. Do we only have that one outstanding? You said that there was nothing that came through on that lawsuit with a car accident?
We have not received any information on that, so therefore, that was discussed in closed session. So there's no other information on that that I can give currently. Even if we go into closed session, there's no other information. All other lawsuits were closed session items.
Okay, thank you.
Was there a closed session item that was just brought out in open session?
I can't discuss the lawsuits.
I was just thinking that.
No, there was information.
That was a closed session item.
I never mentioned names, there was an accident that took place. It's always, you can always ask if there's, does the district have any outstanding lawsuits?
Trustee Sabah?
I want to thank you, Dr. Masalim, for everything you and administration are doing. I'm sorry, these questions almost seem like they were sabotage. No offense to anybody, but you're being put in a corner for no particular reason. I don't know why she's upset, but at the end of the day, we shouldn't bring out closed items.
That wasn't a closed item.
It was, it was.
No, it was not, it was not a closed items, it was discussed before we did the
Should we go into closed session to discuss this? Because obviously, we can't go any further into this discussion. But you brought up an item that was brought up in closed, excuse me.
Trustee Sabah has the floor.
You brought up an item that was brought up in closed session into an open session. Do we need to go into closed session to discuss that, because you violated?
I did not violate it. That's, that's, anybody can, anybody can FOIA that information. That happened
Then why have closed sessions? If we're going to say everybody can FOIA the information,
Everybody can FOIA the information.
They can FOIA, and they didn't FOIA, but you gave it out.
Trustee Sabah?
That is not right, something is wrong with that comment to be made, that was a closed session.
I asked a question which I allowed to ask.
Okay. Dr. Masalim, do you have anything else for your report?
I do not, thank you.
Any other open items? Okay, a motion to end the meeting? Six fifty-one? Trustee, rule call? Yeah, trustee Fawaz, supported.
No, sorry.
All in favor?
Aye.